Okay, sounds like we're started. So it's six o'clock. I'd like to open up the meeting. Are there any adjustments to the? Select board agenda at all?
I don't have.
I'm not sure if mine will fall under there or not.
Well, go ahead and.
I had a phone call the other night about renting tables and chairs from the town hall.
Okay.
Still in lockdown or is?
That's a good question. We should probably. Let's have that be an adjustment to the agenda and we will discuss that.
Okay.
Probably see what the updated guidance on the V L C.
We're getting close. I know that.
Because it will be rented for an outside. Party. It won't be in the town hall.
Oh, then how are they gonna? Are they gonna be out in the parking area or?
Nope, they're gonna take it to their home and use them.
Oh, 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 yeah, I don't. I don't see any problem with that, but.
Yeah, me either.
Yeah, nothing, nothing wrong with that. Nothing wrong with that at all.
Okay, and I'll make sure that they have them all cleaned up before they come back into the town.
That sounds good.
That sounds great. Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
I have, I have kind of a slight adjustment, I guess, just as I was getting ready for the meeting tonight after I got home from work, there was a. A bid estimate from the the roofer that I was kind of counting on, which I said to Chris and Paul. It's way more than I anticipated, so I guess we should probably. Talk about that. I was just gonna give an update that I was had a commitment from someone and and I was waiting for a bid. So I guess we'll.
I would like to, I would like to talk about it as well, Michael, because it seems incredibly high to me.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's a lot higher than I expected. So let's um. Let's add that to the agenda as other than an update. I had it listed under updates, but this is definitely, I think, more than just an update at this point. With that bid estimate that just came in. Any other adjustments at all? All right, any public comment? Okay, I don't hear any. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills to the town? Okay, Paul, I think you said so moved, but your your mic is off right at the moment.
Sorry, so moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any, any discussion at all? Sorry. Okay, all in favor? All right, okay, good. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes to the May tenth twenty twenty one select board meeting?
What's new proof?
No, second.
Second, any discussion at all about the minutes?
No.
Um, then do I hear a vote to approve? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, town clerks report.
I had an email come in from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. That they wanted a name and an email address to put on their. Contact listing for any upcoming trainings or meetings or whatever. So I put Paul Council on that.
Paul? Does that sound, sound right? I think that's perfect, but.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I have the select board listed, taking Brian's name off and putting Chris's on for Secretary of State's office. And I have. James, I cannot pronounce his last name, our tree warden. Do you know what his last name is?
No.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't.
It is.
Let me see.
Got it right here. It is spelled S C H W E I T H E L M.
Schweitel.
However you pronounce that. So I have. Yes.
You're just adding them to a list?
Yeah, for the tree warden.
Yeah, that's James Schweithelm is how you pronounce.
Pretty close. I was pretty close.
He is out there on the list of that full. I think it was from. Was it natural resources? I forward that email to you, Michael?
Yes, I think so.
So his name is on that and he just sent me back an email telling me that he has signed up for the tree warden training.
Okay, great.
Yep. And. I have been doing a lot of entry in the Nemrick system, putting the dog licenses in there and it's gonna be a pretty smooth. Transition.
Great.
And after I get done doing that, I'm gonna start hopefully putting some of the land records in there.
In Nemrick?
In Nemrick, yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, yeah.
We have the program for it now. And I guess my other question would be, are we still in the? I don't know my word I want. Still wearing mask in the office? Like if somebody comes in to do research in the vault, wear the mask when they're here?
I think that's up to you folks, really. I mean.
Yeah.
It is still. Requested that in an enclosed spaces. People wear masks unless they've been fully vaccinated. So you don't know people coming in. You don't know whether they have or not.
Right. And we legally can't ask them.
Yeah, and the work in the workplaces, if you can stay six feet apart, then you don't have to. If you're not positive someone's vaccinated. Then you can't do it. You'd have to put masks on. So a lot of people are just wearing the mask still that. And especially in a small office to.
Yep.
Just to avoid having to get into that issue. I'm not, not even clear about the asking of vaccination status is a issue.
Right.
I don't think you could do that.
I don't think you can either.
People are doing it, but it's I'm not sure it's legal.
It's not legal.
Being in the medical field, I can't share anything with anyone. I walk in like, have you been vaccinated? Like, you can't ask me that. Unless I willingly tell you.
And I'm getting more and more familiar with the vault every day.
Okay. Without a caution and just ask people to mask up when they're when they're visiting.
That's what I would do. It's the simplest. As far as you guys all together, it's up to you guys. If you want to mask up while you're working, it's my opinion.
Yeah, when it's just the three of us in here, we don't mask up. But when somebody comes in, we normally put the mask on.
Yep.
I, I, I would ask, I would ask everybody who visits to mask up. I would keep that consistent for now.
Yeah.
Coming soon.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have a better answer in a week or so, but as far as I can tell, that's. I, that's what I would say.
Okay, very good.
Just a recommendation.
I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions for Robin at all?
I don't have anything.
I don't either.
I do not either. Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Okay, so our town treasurer is on an airplane, so. I guess we'll move on to the town highway report.
Um, well, we got some things going on. The grant is, we're approximately have done that, I'd say.
Okay.
Cool. I've got a couple concerns. Richard Badger. Lives the first house. Well, I call it first house on the right, but there's the old Weber players to set up on top. Long front of his stone wall, they cut a ditch in there and put stone in the bottom of it. And now he's got. A job on top of his stone that they hydro seeded today and it goes back up to his wall. And it's about twelve inches wide and no way to take care of it. And I'm gonna get a hold of Alan tomorrow if it's all you guys. And see if we can turn that back into a swale and leave it grassed so he can mow it.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. You got an unmaintainable strip.
Yeah, yeah, and then the brush is gonna grow up in front of his wall. Sooner or later, it's gonna deteriorate in front of that wall. Wall's gonna fall over. I think we're creating a guy hardship.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, it actually won't, it won't take, it won't take too long for it to potentially fail. So.
No. No, it won't.
We're not, we're not talking about a long time here. We're talking about a few seasons and it could actually be, we could be in trouble. So. I agree with you as well. So I agree with you and Paul.
All right, I'm going to get a hold of Alan tomorrow to make sure we can hydro seed it in the basket. And I can't believe that. But what we can is covered above this driveway. It's gonna be running through grass about. A hundred and twenty feet maybe, and then it'll go onto the stone ditch and we'll put a. Check dam right there. So I wouldn't think that it would cause any problem, but I'm pretty sure it makes them quite a lot happier. Young person.
Yeah, Alan's.
So I'm gonna look into that tomorrow.
Yeah, Alan's pretty reasonable, so.
Yeah.
My experience working with him.
Alan and I. Worked together and went school together.
Oh, wow, okay.
You know, I'm sure that we won't have a problem.
Yeah.
I just want to make it, make you aware of it that the boys got anime, so we're probably gonna change that ditch.
Okay.
And. Then Paul Betts called me over on the end of King Pond Road, I guess it is. He lives in Cherokee Hill, but where he's complaining about King Pond. I sent the guys over to clean the berm up alongside the road there. And it looks like they toughed out into the field, but they didn't. But I told Paul that we'd come back, clean that brush up and make it decent on the edge of his field because. The lack of maintenance on that corner is due to the fact that the brush is there and. So I told him we would clean that brush up and and make it right and hydro seed it. So I guess if there's any discussion, probably now's the time to do it. It's, I don't know, maybe a couple hundred feet down across there. It ain't gonna take. There probably ain't three hours worth of work there with the excavator and making it right and hydro seeding it.
Yeah, go ahead. I needs to be done.
Yeah. That whatsoever.
Yeah, no, I don't either.
Well, that's good because I already told him we'd do it.
Well, I guess. At any time, you know, Chuck, in the future, you know, those kind of decisions, it, I mean, I appreciate you checking in with us, but. You know, I definitely trust your judgment and, you know, you know, you're just stating making it right is the right thing to do.
Right. Well, I just wanna keep you guys posted, so.
Right, I appreciate that.
Going on that we're not, it ain't going on behind your back. That's, this is more of just letting you guys know. What I've already told the guys.
Okay, all right.
And also with. Mulch for the hydro seeder. It's short demand and Greg. Told me that we shouldn't be buying a great deal because of the budget. And I got ahold of Milton Rental and he had twenty bags down there. That's all he had. It doesn't know any, can't get anymore, so I bought them all. But twenty bags is gonna be, we'll have a little leftover on this grant project, but not a great deal. So. When you see the bill come in, that's where that came from.
Okay.
Yeah.
And was Greg thinking of like waiting until the end of the fiscal year to get more? Was that what he was worried about?
But we needed, we needed. We figured around twelve bags to do. The grant, which needs to be done by the end of June, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So. And then I talked to Steve and he said, well, I've only got eight left and I don't know when the next shipment will be in. So I told him send them too.
Yeah.
We're gonna be doing something that's gonna need to ditch up somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, Paul is gonna take. Three of them bags, so.
Okay.
And we got some trees that we want to take down on Wheeler Hill. Now, do we need to?
Sorry. Chuck, can I ask a quick question? Sorry, man. So have we ever bought just bulk? Bulk mulch? Just blown in the back of the one of, one of this, one of our trucks as opposed to buying bag mulch?
Well, this is, this is not really mulch. It's, it's the, the paper fiber to go in the hydro seed.
Yeah. For the hydro.
Right.
Never mind.
Right. And it can't get wet. I mean, it's recent.
It'll start to grow.
Stick right together. Yeah, I got you. I was confused about what we were talking about.
I'm sorry, I did say malt, but it's, it's actually. Well, I don't know what you would talk.
It's pulp, it's pulp.
Yeah, pretty much. Steve gives us a good deal on it. In fact, we're trying a new brand now. The what we have been using took about an hour and a half to two hours to mix up a load. This is doing in fifteen minutes. It's got the taffy wire all in it, fertilizer in it, so it should be a. No, I mean, it should be a win-win situation. So. The trees in Wheeler Hill, do we need to get a hold of the, the tree warden?
If they're, they're on private property, but they're in the right of way of the town road.
They're in the right of way of the town road and they're leaning out over the road and the power lines. And we were in the process of talking to the guy we had last year, and I can't think of his name about taking down.
Right.
A select few trees.
I, I think just to, to kind of follow protocol and to make sure that. That we're okay with that, that we probably should have the tree warden take a look at them and. I'll use the word condemn them. And then we should probably notify. The property owner. That we're gonna be cutting down some trees on, on, in the town right of way on their property. Just so that everybody's in the loop about it. Yes, Robin?
And they are hanging over the power line. Should hybrid power be notified about it? Maybe they'll take them down?
That's true. They would do that, especially if the power line would be involved.
Well. Maybe.
In fact. If they are hanging over the power line that are, you know, we shouldn't really hire someone to do that. We should probably. Have Hardwick elect, just in case something happens. I'm sure that a professional tree removal crew could remove it without. You know, getting on the power line.
And everything. We got a select few trees in town that we need to have taken care of. And Greg and I were thinking that we should get him a full day's work so that when he come in here, he can work the full day and have it taken care of. Because he's real good and, you know, it would really suck to try to get him out here to take down a couple of trees and then turn him loose. Good. That's probably what's gonna happen once twice and he ain't going back.
Uh huh. Yeah. I guess maybe we should check in with the Hardwick Electric Department about the ones that are potentially.
I can do that.
Yeah.
I do agree with Chuck. If they're gonna, if, if the Hardwick Electric's not gonna come take them down, which frequently is the case if they feel that they're not dangerous. Put it, put as many together as we can and just get them done. But we should call them at least and have Brian come look at them.
Yeah, I agree as well, but Hardwick Electric is not very responsive in terms of timing. It's gonna take them a while to get this together.
Right.
So Chuck, if we have the timeframe, I mean, I agree with everybody that we should probably make them aware.
Right.
But if we have the timeframe to do it, we should probably.
Well, we've been talking, I'm right after the first July, I believe we've, we've got enough. Set, well, was up there. We may have to find some other ones somewhere, but. We've got enough to keep him busy a day, so it'll make it worthwhile for him to come down and worthwhile for us to get him down here.
Okay. Plenty of trees in Woodbury. I'm sure we can find some others to give him a day's work.
Yeah, so there's been a crew that has been cutting along fourteen for, for a bit now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're cutting for Hardwick Electric.
They're cutting for, yeah. Electric, so they're available. They're around. And they're on contract, I assume, to a degree. I don't know what their contract is, but.
Yeah, he, he used to do the work for the town of Woodbury and he was so busy last year that he couldn't. So we hired this guy from Casper.
Okay.
He done an excellent job, so.
Yeah, well, it sounds great to me. I would love to have someone come out and get it done.
Yeah, well, they're gonna end up being a problem and just.
Yeah.
They're gonna be blocking the road here some afternoon and that's gonna be the end of that, but.
Yep.
All right, so I'll get a hold of the tree warden and meet with him and.
Hardwick Electric.
Okay. All right. And Steve Gray, I called him about the snow machine trail on the Cabot Road. Got some ideas in, in the works, but nothing, nothing they nailed down. I've been talking to Wayne Prescott and I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't get back to you. After I talked to him. I guess I don't know why I didn't. I just plain forgot I had a gas.
I never forget anything.
They, they're working on two or three different scenarios about getting the snow machines off the Cabot Road. So. I'm waiting to hear back from him on that. And they also want some fill up off in San Hill Road. For snow machine that trailer changing up there. And one side is gonna come up quite a lot. They gotta put a culvert, a brook. And I told him when they were ready to do it, get this. Everything ducks in a row that we would find him some fill from ditching and stuff and take it up to.
That's great. Sounds great. Thanks.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Excellent.
Ron Wells was complaining about the ditching on Valley Lake Road. But after seeing Badgers lawn, I guess I can see why. So I haven't had anything to say to him about that, but. I guess one of the last things is. Trail by the skating rink. You wanna talk about that now or you wanna do that?
Yeah, we could, we could. Just while we're talking about, I got a call from Ron Wells too. I didn't speak with him personally. There was a message on my machine. And I've been meaning to send him an email. He was complaining about the deepness of the ditches and I just wanted to let him know that we're basically. That those that are the standards now with the municipal roads general permit. So I'm gonna, I'm planning on sending him an email just responding to his. Phone message that I received.
He didn't, he hasn't said anything to me. Of course, Ron and I don't get along real good anyway, but.
Yeah.
He was after, he was after Greg. And I think it was Peter. Might have been. Might have been Tim. I don't remember. There's two of them working there and he got after them about it.
Yeah.
I said, well. If he says anything else, have him call me. I mean, we're doing it by state specs, but then after I looked at Badgers lawn up there, I. I guess if we tore the edge of that lawn of his and Diana's or whoever it is that I'd be upset to.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that you aren't gonna go that far up to Diana and Ron's house.
It's only two units, six hundred feet, and that was Badgers driveway.
Yeah, okay, that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I was assuming too.
Yeah.
So I was gonna tell him that they won't be up there, so he doesn't have to worry about his. His lawn or ditch. That was one of his concerns that he expressed in the phone message to me.
Not, not yet.
No, yeah.
It was done a couple of years ago, so it really, it's at the top of the crest of the hill. It doesn't really need. Any more than what's, what's already there.
Well. That's a difference of opinion. It should have.
All right. Different diameter of, of, of ditch and it actually doesn't confirm, comply to. What we need for the gradient.
That one, when it was done.
Has to be revisited and we'll have to have that conversation with.
Yeah, when it was done, it was left so that it was undercut. The sod comes right out over the ditch and that should be cleaned up. Made decent. I mean, you up there now and the grass is two foot tall on the edge of the road there where. It should be the edge of their lawn. I would even welcome big stone rather than have looked at myself, but. There, it's not gonna be too far into the future. Something's gonna have to happen there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, he won't be happy about it. I can tell you that.
Well, we'll have to, we'll start to butter him up now.
Right.
Because it's gonna have to happen to save the road.
Well, yeah, but. On the other hand, there's only so much buttering you can do.
Right. Not everybody's gonna be your friend.
That's it. And they don't have to be. I don't care. I mean.
Be right back.
I won't overstep my bounds, but I'll be right there.
Yep.
So Chuck. Are you willing to go up with, with Greg and talk to Chris Davison once the crusher is up in the quarry?
Yes.
Okay, cuz he offered to have you guys up. And we have. Talking about this, but we have a quote for, for crushing costs, which we'll talk about. But if you're willing to go up there with Greg and make sure that you get the size fractions that you want. Because we talked about some of the larger size fractions that Greg mentioned when we were out briefly chatting with.
Right.
With, with folks on the road. That could be really helpful. Make sure we get what we need.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that anytime. Is he up there now?
I think they're gonna be up there in the next week or so, but I don't have a, I'll let you know as soon as we have one. And hopefully Chris will get us, I mean, get us all involved, but I mean, the two people who I really want there the most are you and Greg.
Yeah, yeah, just let me know anytime and we'll get together.
Fair enough. So I had a concern about the proposal from McDonald's.
Yes, please.
When I did up the math for how much this would cost the town. I mean, I agree it's a good deal, but the, it's two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars according to my calculator.
I had, I had two hundred and seventy-eight.
Okay.
My math wrong, I guess.
Well, my math could be wrong too. So I'm just a little, I'm not really sure we're gonna get the money for that unless we take out some kind of loan.
Well, the question, what are we spending on? Because, because one of the thoughts is you could, I don't know what, what a five-year loan looks like with that. With what we're spending on stone.
I think we have budget, you know, I, this is just memory. I'd have to look at financials, which we. Which I don't have. We didn't get any this week, but I think we budgeted about thirty thousand dollars a year for gravel and then.
Thirty-five thousand this year.
Thirty-five thousand, okay. So, yeah, that's pretty much what we have budgeted. For the next fiscal year.
Right, the only way you could do that is, is would have to borrow against what your. Future lack of purchasing, if you get what I'm saying. I just don't know what that stone number is.
So I think what we would have to do is figure out, okay, so if we do this, we're gonna have to take out a loan. We're gonna be paying interest on the loan with the interest, you know, and compare apples to oranges. So if we just continue to buy stone from local quarries. Without and within a yearly budget and not paying interest, you know, which is gonna be. The least expensive in the long run for the town. We need to, we need to figure that out before we make any commitment on this. So. At least that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, because we, we can only borrow for five years without having to go to the voters realistically. So whatever we borrow would have to be in a five-year note and we just need to know what those numbers. So what I need to know is the. What we're spending on stone now and can that translate into a loan to replace that? And it doesn't make sense to do that. My guess is it may. Because interest rates are pretty low. But I don't know that.
Yeah, I mean, just.
It's just the ideal time to do it.
Yes.
In fact, the crushing costs are low.
Right.
I just want us to make an informed decision. I wanna, I wanna see the numbers and compare the numbers with. What we would pay.
I guess I can look this up. So I'll look up what our our costs are. We have no, we will have no trucking costs.
Right, right.
We'll have no storage costs. We'll have no overhead costs.
Correct.
And we have raw stone available.
Right. I I think it's a good deal. It just can we make, make the borrowing work within our budget that we have. I think, I think we need to figure that out.
One other thing that you ought to keep in the back of your mind is we're not gaining on resurfaces at all, thirty-five thousand. We're doing a little bit of resurfacing here and there, but it's short, short spurts. These roads all need that back.
Yeah.
And. The I seems to me like that if you could get it, put whatever you had to put up and and uh. In my opinion, borrowing money on stone and gravel is way more feasible than buying, borrowing money on truck.
Yes.
Yeah, and I just want us to have the figures so that if somebody challenges us on this thinking or. You know, we need, we need to have the information for. You know, yearly costs, buying it from local quarries versus, you know, going, going with this deal. I think I just, I just want us to have all of the figures so that. Um, it's kind of a clear, informed uh decision that we would make. I have, I have nothing against this at all. I think it is a good deal, but. Um, you know, when I, when I added up the costs.
Yeah, we're borrowing, buying, buying several years worth of material at once.
Yeah, yeah. So we, I just wanna try to, you know, have us. Have all of the figures. So if somebody wants to challenge us on this, we can show them this is the reason that we're doing this and and have the numbers there to. To show that this is the best decision to make.
Michael, I'm willing to, I'm willing to run the numbers. If you, if if there's something outside of the town report that I should be looking at, would you send that to me, please?
Yeah, I would check in with the road crew. What are they paying right now for a stone?
Can I have, can I have some sense of how that's working? Because I'll, I'll try to do this out for. I think your stretch and see.
Yeah, I think Greg and Chuck could do that. And then, and then, you know, the, the trucking part is um, you know, that's kind of maybe just having Chuck and Greg sort of figure out, well, what is it? You know, how many miles to McDonald's or any of the other quarries that they go to? Um. You know, just kind of come up with a ballpark figure of of town expense for that um for each, each truckload.
Under Cabot, under the Cabot Road. From Bigfords, it was an hour and ten minutes alone, round track.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, you're pulling out of the, you're pulling out of the Marshfield Court? And from Bigfords?
We have been, yes.
Yeah, when they, when they get stone from other places, yeah.
That's.
I'm telling you, we're paying fourteen dollars a yard over there too.
Plus your trucking, your trucking cost's gonna be a hundred dollars an hour at least, wouldn't you say, Chuck?
I figured it'd be ninety.
Okay, I figured it was pretty close, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's what they're getting for ten-wheelers through bikes right now.
So it's ninety. I was pretty close then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so just having those figures, you know, kind of figuring that out.
Run these numbers. We need to run them in steep.
Yeah, 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 I understand.
Lose an investment in our future. There's no question about that. But we can, but we can decide exactly what fractions we want. We can have exactly the kind of stone that we want. They're gonna make it for us and they're gonna have it on site. We're, we're gonna have, you know, at least four or five years worth of not dealing with this.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I, I have, I have no objections to going forward with this deal. I just want us to have. All of the numbers so that, that it's pretty clear to the rest of people in town that this was a good deal. I, I want to make sure.
Brandy, Brandy should work out what the borrowing costs would be.
Yeah.
For what, the two seventy-eight?
We have traditionally borrowed from the Union Bank, um, which we have most of our dealings with, um, all of our dealings with, I think, and. They usually give us a pretty good rate. Um. So I, I'm sure she'll check in with the, the people there and um probably at our next select board meeting, she could have. Figures on um, you know, the, the loan, the five-year loan, the interest rates, so we could, would have a clear.
Right.
Sense of what that figure would be. Um.
Because I think if we get all those numbers together, I think, I think it's gonna be a positive thing and we'll be able to move forward with the information we have.
Yeah, I, I feel it will be too. I just wanna have all those numbers.
I agree with you, yeah.
When we're challenged, you know, we, we can show that.
Yep.
The numbers and and the reasoning for why we are choosing to do this.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Because it's a big, it's a big chunk of money and somebody's gonna wanna know, why are we doing this?
Yeah, I'm sure.
I bet there'd be more than one somebody.
Right. And so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
The math is gonna prove us out pretty fast.
Yeah, so I agree, but I want, we just should have those numbers.
We will. Yep, great.
The availability of being able to get it. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, if you need to. I mean, that's a big deal too. When it comes to time. You know, there's a lot of days that they, and I'm sure they bitch and we'd have to. Get the whip out, but they shouldn't be working Saturdays and Sundays during these roads up and in that case, they'd be able to.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. You know, there's a lot of pluses. I agree. In fact, they're all pluses, really.
It's just, it's, it's convincing people that an investment in the future is worthwhile.
Yeah, it's like Chuck said, we borrow money about with the trucks and nobody complains about it, so I think this is similar to that in my mind.
Well, just the savings and the crushing is more than gonna pay the interest.
Yes.
Would you take?
I would, absolutely. Yeah. The, the reduced crushing costs and the fact that the stone is all free.
Yeah.
I mean, and, no, I mean, I, I would, I would say that we should buy this for, for as long as we possibly could. But we owe, you know, because this is gonna be local and it's gonna be cheap and we're paying only crushing costs. This whole thing makes a lot of sense to me, but I agree with Michael. We have.
Yeah, it makes total sense.
Once you do the numbers, it'll pay.
I have no objections at all. I just wanna, I wanna have those numbers there for when we're challenged.
We have to, we have, we have.
Because otherwise we'd be killed.
They took the money. It's a big chunk of money, which I understand. Yeah. But it's a, it's everything that we need and actually have needed for a bit.
Yep.
Right? Because we have a lot of. Yeah.
You know. The, we should be resurfacing a couple of stretches of three miles a year here and. We're putting Band-Aids on them and putting three inches on them. We ought to be putting six on and. You know, we're getting by and the road, the road in good shape. I've heard a lot of comments about how the road there right now and. Which is good, but. The better, the more gravel you have on them and the better the gravel is, the less maintenance there is to do to them. I mean, there's even gonna be savings in the. In the honing and cleaning the ditches and the culverts and stuff when we get them up the way they ought to be.
Right. It's gonna stabilize the roads conservatively. And so there's downs, there are really good downstream costs that are gonna be eliminated. Once the roads are stabilized with, with a good, with a good base there, so.
Yeah. Now, I think we're all convinced this is the right idea. We just um.
You gotta do the numbers.
Yep, just gotta do the numbers.
Them knots is dynamite.
Yeah. Yeah, um. So there, there, there is one other road thing. Um, I've, I've um. Talked to Chuck about this a little bit and or maybe we've had email exchanges and I sent some photos out. Today, there was a complaint that Robin forwarded to me. Um, some folks that live near the school have been seeing um. Off-road trucks going across the school property, town property into the town wetland area. And then up an old road that comes out on, um, it's, it's actually basically a vast trail. Um. So I checked it out over the weekend and there's definitely some major. Truck tires, yeah, in the road. Um, so um, I guess what we need to do is try to block that off um. So that those trucks aren't going up there. Um, I, I didn't walk, I walked maybe. I walked pretty much to the end of the town property, um, the wetland property on the road. I didn't go any further to see what it looks like. Further on. I may do that if I have some time in the near future, but um. There was some pretty rough spots that I did see, so.
Greg and I. Walk this regularly with the school kids.
Yeah.
And this is not a new thing.
No, there have been eight, there's been ATV traffic, but um I've never seen truck tire, you know, major ruts like there is right now.
Yep.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, Gary.
Uh, I just want to mention, uh, a couple nights ago, probably two or three o'clock in the morning, I, I got on camera about a group of five or six UTVs that went by my house, headed into, headed into Woodbury. Um, they were like razor style, uh, four-wheelers. Uh huh. Uh, about two or three o'clock in the morning, they came by here.
Okay, and the, these may have been that type of vehicle. Um, they had to go over the, there's a, a snowmobile. Bridge um on the town, town property. And that bridge did get broken up a little bit, but I can't really see an off-road uh truck. I can't see it going over that bridge.
They must, they broke the edges off.
It did broke, break the edges off, yeah.
So they must have.
Yeah. So it must have been, um, because I would think the span on a truck would be even wider than that bridge. Um.
Yeah, well, these, these were, uh, these were just basically a larger version of a four-wheeler, just, you know, like, you like, you know, a dual, like a dual cab four-wheeler.
Yeah, they're the, I've seen them go up through there. I didn't see them go into the road, but I've seen them going up and down Valley Lake. They went somewhere and then came back.
Yeah, they came right off the side road here by my house, headed right down fourteen and like, it's like two-thirty or three o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
Because that, that's when this person has been seeing them go past their house um on town property. It's like. Mentioned like eleven PM and if they are going all the way through um over onto Grady and Sheila Neal's land, um. Then they would have been coming right down Foster Hill Road once they came out.
Yeah, where they would have to come right through Grady and Sheila's door, I know, right down by the milk pond.
Well, the trail, you can, um, actually, you can go down um and come out on Jeff Weiss's, Jeff Weiss's property.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, okay.
I haven't looked for. The, you know, truck tire or tire tracks over there. Um.
Well, Greg and I were talking about it today and um. Just beyond the skating rink is a bunch of trees and it narrows right up there. And we talked about it and come up with the idea, maybe we, we've got some telephone poles over there on the corner of Dog Pond and Tibbetts Hill. Maybe we should set a couple of those and we priced a gate, just a, one of them galvanized gates, twelve foot. From trap to supply, the gate and the hardware to make it, you know, the hinges and stuff, is a hundred and twenty-five bucks. But.
Let's, let's do it. Let's do it.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We weren't low enough to miss that bridge. Now, do we have to get down? So if they come across that bridge, we can block them off.
The, the new bridge by Brian Shop?
Well, I, I haven't seen it, but that, that's a bridge you're talking about, right? That they, you think they wanna cross and rock the edges off.
No, no, thi- this one is further up um on this, on the school and town wetland area. Um, there's a small brook there.
That, that would work good then, right there, but it's probably fifty feet beyond the skating rink.
Yeah.
And there's a bunch of big trees that come in on both sides and we can narrow it up right. I mean, even if we had to put a block.
Yeah, and then maybe some kind of signage that, that, just to tell people, you know, off-road vehicles that they aren't allowed. Um, I did talk to Steve Gray about this also, and um he mentioned that they could put up some type of gate on that new bridge. Uh, once it's completed, it's not finished yet.
They're probably gonna have to to keep people out of there.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that's the only way you're gonna do it.
Yeah, and he'll, I haven't told him yet that the snowmobile bridge that goes across that brook is. Somewhat damaged. A snowmobile could still use it, but um.
Yeah.
It, it, it's, it did get damaged some.
Right.
Yeah, I would say, let's do it. Um.
Alright.
Yeah.
Agreed.
The, the excavator's sitting right there, so I'll get a gate and we'll get it done this week.
Okay, alright.
Thanks, Chuck. Much appreciated.
No problem.
I had one question had been asked in the, when the excavators right in the village there, can they go over between the post office and the fire station, just dress that? Area, the plows tore up, up a little bit. The mowing guy was over there and couldn't get in there.
Where that old tree was? Is that where you're talking?
Well, to the left toward the post office, there's some big, big uh tufts of grass and things that got dug up with the plow and the loader.
Yeah, I'll look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't think it would take a whole lot just to dress it up so it could grow grass and then they can mow it, but we'll probably have, I think our trailer might be sitting there, but Timmy can move that.
Well, yeah, or I can, somebody.
Yeah, it's easy to move. It's.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, just since it right there, I don't think it'd be a whole lot of work to clean that up because the mowing guy was gonna mow it and then, then Roy was gonna mow it, but it was so bumpy, it couldn't get a mower on it.
Yeah, well, even if it takes a few minutes, we, it ain't no big deal. Well done.
Alright, perfect. Thank you.
No problem. That's all I got today.
Any, any other questions for Chuck?
I'm good.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
No problem. Thank you guys.
Um, so next on the agenda is to take a look at the um, the job descriptions for a road crew member and um. For road foreman. I can bring those up on the screen if you'd like, um, or if we have.
I've got it on this screen, but I haven't got it on this screen.
Okay, I've got some paper copies in front of me, but. Do you want me to, I can bring it up on the screen. Shall I do that?
Yeah, I think then we're all looking at the same thing.
Okay, uh, hang on a second.
Because I would, we're probably looking at a road, uh, highway worker one and two, right?
And two, yes.
Yeah, road crew one and two.
Oh, wait a minute. I gotta do the share screen thing here. Uh-oh.
Broke it?
No, um. Leaf, if you're there, can you make me a co-host?
Yes, I'm here. I can make you a co-host.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, so. Alright. So bear with me while I get this.
We've also, I think I sent you guys the uh, the road crew CDL application that someone made a fillable. Application that we could use. I don't know if this one still works or something else we should look at prior to this.
Tip of the day. Okay, here we go. Whoops, I wanna do that. So let me figure out how I can make this thing move here. Gotta get. That didn't work. Right, I'm just gonna eliminate that. Okay, here we go. So, um. How do we wanna discuss this? Would you, we just wanna look at the items and see if there's anything missing or things that we wanna change?
So what I, I didn't have a big problem with it. Chuck knows more about the technical side of it. I know some of the things we're lacking in our current folks is. It's a little bit of technical ability to deal with the computer side of it, which I think should be on here.
Yeah.
Uh, familiarity with, with some of the computer, because uh, the need to be able to do your timesheet and to enter. Logs and things like that. And that's not on here. You know, to be able to deal with Grand Apple, not being the grant writer, but at least be able to enter the work into something.
Yeah.
So I don't know what sentence to write to make, make, make that make sense, but. That way, not one of us, we're not having to hire another person to document things.
Right. Sort of like what I do now, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, the idea would have the employee just simply take care of the entry of their own work stuff, you know?
Okay, alright, like the.
So I'm not, I'm not talking to. So I'm not, I'm not talking a computer expert, I'm talking just, uh, literate with the computer enough to enter your time sheet to enter the truck work logs, the workday work logs that are online, or on the computer.
Michael, the only question that I had was, oh. Oh, are you, are you still there? Okay.
He's there, yeah.
Sorry, Michael, the only question.
I'm here.
Is, um, you know, some of our some of our assessments of, our road assessments require us to be using this digital template.
Yeah.
And we've, I think you and I have been, and I think Chuck was there for, for some of them as well. Um, you know, they have to be able to, to manipulate that so that we can classify roads. And I didn't know if that was too specific, or if that was, you know, something that we could say be willing to be trained in, you know, this type of, of software template, because that's pretty much what they're taking these days. No one, no one's going out with a field book anymore in a transit.
No.
That worked on.
And I think we're thinking right along the same lines, Chris, it's just that, that stuff, their day-to-day stuff that's now computerized.
Yeah, unaware, unawareness of, of the, of, of that as a, as, as a feature of the job in a way.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've been doing, you know, as far as the grant documenting and, and I haven't, I've been trying to learn how to do this, um, uh, recording of roads, and especially for the municipal road general permit, which ones now meet the requirements, et cetera, and, um, I have yet to learn that myself, you know, I know how to use a computer a little bit, but I am an old timer and, uh, a lot of this stuff is kind of new to me, so, um, yeah, so that's definitely, we're definitely lacking that right at the moment, um, for all of the recording of the work that's been done.
Cause really, the best place to document is the person doing it at the end of the day, puts it in whatever system we have.
It would, it would be nice if that could be done, yes, I agree.
Or the truck logs, things like that, and I know we're having struggles with the time sheets now, so I think it's fair question, if someone's completely illiterate on the computer or writing and whatnot, we either gotta get them some help on that or hire somebody that
Yeah.
has at least basic skills, or we, at least trainable, willing to be trained, cause what I don't want is someone say, I ain't touching the damn computer, you know, that's not gonna fly with me.
Yeah. So basic skills, so basic skills on a computer that, um, and, you know, basically that to be able to record, um, or log their, their own work.
Yeah, trucks, truck worksheets, time worksheets.
Yeah, truck, truck work and maintenance sheets, there's, I have a, I have a collection of paper maintenance sheets that are building up that Laura Daly used to record.
Right, so this is exactly what I said, we've been trying for a long time to get the actual workers entering this stuff.
Yeah. And then, um, so I'm gonna put reporting on, um, I'll put reporting to state.
Yeah, so something with basic, basic computer skills, be able to work, you know, operate a word document, I oper- operate type, type of time sheet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And a willingness to learn the other things that need to be done.
And I think we can, but if we have some sentence on there, the, I think it addresses all those things, we can ask more specific questions during an interview.
Yeah.
And we'll just make it clear to folks that saying we're not gonna touch the computer is not gonna be, not gonna be a good thing for you.
Right, I agree with Paul, I mean, I think that we just have to make sure that people understand if they're applying.
You, you will be learning this.
Just general computer literacy.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll, we'll find a way to train you. We'll train you and we'll get you, we'll get you right, but you have to be willing to do it.
Right.
Okay.
But other than that, the technical side, I'd have to lean on Chuck if he thinks the things on there are good enough, uh, to get what he's looking for.
They looked good to me, I was going over them the other day there and, you know, it looks, I think you headed down the right road.
Okay. So I can make, um, I can add this one change, I'll, I'll just, um, I'll make that change with, for the computer skills, um, you know, work on the wording a little bit and then send that, a, a copy of this out to you guys.
Yeah, cause that's just the one fix, I think the rest of it looked okay to me.
Okay.
I, I agree with Paul, I have, I think that you did a terrific job, Michael.
Well, actually, uh, Skip Lindsey originally put this together.
Did this one, we're not gonna take credit.
No, well, I appreciate what Skip did.
I, I do too, yeah.
So, so you also have that fillable form, Mike, that we could use as the application, do we feel that that's, uh, adequate?
Um, I haven't looked at that, I saw that, um, that, that you had sent that in an email, but I, I didn't look at it, cause I just figured it was for a CDL license, so.
Yeah, it's, uh, it basically, I think it says CDL employment, meaning you have to have a CDL to, to apply.
That is, that is definitely required, yeah.
So what it says is you're, I think it's a good one, um, I kind of like it, cause it's fillable online, so if we sent that out, so if we're gonna, I don't know if we're gonna want to get this out before the next meeting, uh, we could review that, uh, to be looked at, or do we want to get this rolling and just send this application out?
Um, let's, let's get, let's look, I think, um, why don't we wait till our next meeting, which is, I guess it's three weeks away though, isn't it?
Right, cause we were trying to get this.
Out, out in June.
Okay, so, um, let me make the one change to the job description, um, and I'll send that out and, um, if we're all okay with it the way it's written, um, we can proceed to, to post, get this out.
Yeah, and in the interim, if you both, if you haven't looked at that online application, just take a look, and if you think it's okay, we'll just send that with this, if people want it, we'll email the stuff to them, and that way we'd receive this all typed, typed written.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's even a good precursor, if you can't fill out the application, maybe you need a different job.
Right.
Maybe you don't need one here.
Right, right.
So Paul, I did look at it, and I think it actually is perfectly fine.
It's a very good application, so if, if Chris is good and I'm good, if you agree, Mike, then we would just review your, your upgrade and then we'll get this thing advertised.
And they'll get it out. Is a link, right?
Yeah.
We'll put a link into the application, and so they have this and they have that.
Well, someone will, I don't know if I know how to do, I could probably, yes, I can do it.
Uh, I mean, we just cut, we cut and paste it, right?
Yeah, yeah, cause it's a nice form, you can type it, type right into it online, save it and send it as an attachment, then we'd be able to read what's on it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think Skip did that application too, so.
Plus, it's a good measure if someone has just some basic computer literacy skills.
And I think, you know, I think the LCT has a, a job posting, um, site.
They do, so I think we can post it there and then send it to the Gazette and maybe the Times Argus.
Yeah, and put it on our website for when that's.
Website.
Yeah.
Post it on the board.
Yeah, they can go out on Front Porch Forum and it could go out on, maybe Gary'd put it on his, his site too.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
So I'm pretty comfortable with that, Chuck is.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think you headed right down the right road.
Okay.
And then we'll kind of pick through, if we have a great day, we'll have twenty or thirty, uh, wonderful applicants that we can select a few to interview.
I like the way you're dreaming.
Yeah, I know, the, uh, my problem is in my, on my work world, everybody's got the sign out, nobody's applying, so.
Yeah, 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 we may find that, so.
Yeah, well, we've got pretty good pay and benefits, so hopefully we'll get, get a good, good selection.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it could go the other way too, and we could be swamped, which would be about, which just makes more work for us.
Yeah, but it should be a good thing, cause again, we're wanting to set the tone for this new person to understand that in a few years, they might actually run in the show here, so they need to be able to do that.
Yeah, yep, 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 yep.
Okay, anything more at all for with that?
I'm good with it.
Alright, okay. So let's move on to, um, just discussing the, this proposal from the Hardwick Police Department, um.
Sure, I, I'll open up it, so it's really not a hard proposal yet, I was approached by, uh, Lieutenant Leo from the Hardwick PD, um, and, and they were wondering if we would be interested in hiring them to do our traffic enforcement like we do with the Washington County Sheriff. Um, cause he's noting, he looked at our budget and realized we're budgeting ten K or so, we're only spending about five, um, cause we're not getting the time, that's been a frustration we've had to share with, uh, a lot of people that were complaining why we weren't doing speed enforcement, so I, I said I would bring it to our attention, and I think if, if you guys think it's a good idea, at the next meeting, I'll invite, uh, Lieutenant Leo in to talk about it, I mean, his, I sent you a copy of what the Orleans Sheriff did with Glover, he's proposing something like that, two to three hours a week, um, of regular patrols, um, things like, I don't want to speak for him about all this, but it was somewhere a number around fifteen thousand they were looking for, I think we're spending around ten now.
If I think we, I think we're budgeting, um, and again, I, my memory may not be.
I'm going by memory too, so it's dangerous.
I think we dropped it back to like seven thousand a year, because we weren't getting the hours that we
Right.
had originally requested and budgeted for.
Um, so I think it's a worthwhile conversation to have, cause one of the problems with the sheriff's office is they're twenty miles away, twenty-five miles away, we're paying that time and mileage, whereas Hardwick drives across the line and they're here. Um, I know for us, they, uh, as part of this deal, I'd like to see them willing to come with fire and rescue when we have overdoses, and we just had a car accident Saturday morning where someone was uh, potentially intoxicated, and we're having, luckily Hardwick PD was followed the ambulance right up, so we didn't have to deal with it ourselves, but that's been a common problem, so you know, that's, that's something I think we could attach into this, it would be really helpful for the safety of our responders.
Yeah, that was my question, Paul, I was wondering if this could be more than just traffic stops.
That, it, it would need to be in my mind, because we're having a serious problem, uh, that, I, I don't even want to say it, cause it's, it's bad luck, but we slow down on the overdoses, but overdoses have been very dangerous in the last two years. Uh, there's been guns involved and violence and threats, and, you know, it's getting to the point where without police protection, we're almost not willing to go to them. I had a fellow last, uh, s- uh, summer, uh, when, when I woke him up, he put his car in reverse and backed down Maple Road at fifty miles an hour and almost hit one of my people coming up the other way, so, um, we really, I, I, I think we need to do something like this, um, and see how it works, it's not gonna be a big cost item for us, um, but I think it could be a big positive.
I think the first thing is that if we, if, if we potentially have this as an option, they at least show up.
Yeah, yeah, cause they've come up, uh, four or five times for nothing in the last year.
Washington County Sheriff's Office typically has not been showing up.
Nope.
They, they really don't do, um, that type of enforcement, um, right?
And.
They're just traffic and serving, um, serving warrants and stuff. That's all, that's what they really do, um.
I, I agree with Paul in every way, because we have, that we would have a, a much more local enforcement agency that we could, so, we could rely on, and then, you know, and they would also show up.
And it's not a big change from what we're doing now. And mostly they're gonna just be doing a traffic patrol, but we'd have the option of, I would want to negotiate with them to say you will come up if we request for an overdose or car accident, thing like that.
And if we've been at fifteen before, and, you know, and we.
I, I think the number might have been ten before, so we're gonna.
We've never, we've never been at fifteen, I know when we, we did.
I'll look back, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did request more hours, uh, five or, well, I don't know how many years ago, four or five years ago, maybe six years ago. Um, just, um, I think mostly when we were dealing with a lot of speeding around Woodbury Lake and another part of town. Um, and they've never been able, they have a shortage of deputies, so they've never been able to honor that, and, um, and so, you know, we did drop it back down, um.
So what I, yeah, what I can do is I can talk to Lieutenant Leo, and if we want to put him on the agenda for next meeting, I'll see, I'll front load him with kind of what we're looking for, and maybe they'll have a proposal for us.
I, I would like to, um, yeah, I would definitely want to have him come ne- at our next meeting, um. I know when we did, we did a whole, um, kind of, uh, research into policing when I was first on the select board, um, you know, we had the state police come, we had talked to the Hardwick Police Department, et cetera, and, cause I guess it was after a couple incidents in town where, um, there was some real potential for, uh, harm, um, one, you know, right across the road from me, um, and I was.
Well, we had the double homicide fire where there was gunfire and everything before we got there.
I was, I was gonna say, I mean, we've had this, and there was no police response.
Right, we, we've been right in the front lines of this thing.
I mean, that's.
Yeah, and if there is police response, usually, you know, like state police response.
It's forty-five minutes to an hour usually.
Yeah, it's usually in an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour before.
Yeah, there's no way they're gonna get here.
And we've had, we've had, I've been assaulted, Dana's been assaulted, um, we've had to throw down with people before, just to keep our members safe, so.
Yeah. So, a- and if Hardwick is willing to, to also.
Yeah, so that's why I want to see what exactly that looks like, cause I, I, I know the answer in the past to do a big contract has been no, nobody wants to do that, this is sort of, uh, doing what we're doing maybe enhanced just a little bit, you know what I'm saying?
I know when we asked them for what it would cost for, for us to have policing coverage, sort of like Greensboro had with them, they, the price tag was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Yes, that's right, and I think that's a non, we've been down that road, but I think this could be a mid, a middle.
That was a non, that was a non-starter, right?
Exactly.
We can't do that. But we can have something similar with a much shorter response time.
Yeah, and, and a little enhancement to it, maybe.
Right.
That's what I'm gonna kind of love, we're looking for the traffic like you've kind of suggested, but we also were, you know, if the fast squads headed out, were you willing to run up for an overdose or a, we got a belligerent drunk.
Or belligerent, or something like that.
Potentially dangerous situation.
Cause it, it's frustrating, I had, I had a shooting a year or so ago, we had to stand outside the house for forty-five minutes for police to arrive before we could go in and help the person, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I would, you know, if we could make this work, I would, I would love to have that. It's been a, it's been a perennial
Yeah.
problem or lack of, lack of any kind of, um, proper, uh, enforcement.
An- anecdotally, after, uh, after the double homicide incident in twenty eighteen, we had a much higher state police presence in town, they were patrolling quite a bit, in fact, I saw a trooper go by my house at least once a week, but that stopped again, cause they're busy and I'm not placing any blame, but, but the net result of that was a lot lower, uh, ish, issues in town.
Right.
You know, and they just go somewhere else.
Yeah, when I talked to the state police about that, they mentioned that, you know, that they cover, they're actually short.
Yeah, they're short, they cover a lot of ground, so I'm certainly not picking on them, they're, they're trying to do a lot with the little.
Yeah, and it's basically, you know, what the state gives them for a budget.
Yeah, so they're, they're.
That's what I was told anyway, um, so. Okay, yeah, let's, let's have him, um, come to our next meeting.
Yep, I'll see you, and I'll, I'll, I'll email you both, uh, if I'm successful in setting that up, if not, we'll get it for a future meeting.
Yeah, and if, yeah, if it's not the next one, then sometime soon.
Yep.
No. Okay, um, so, looks like, um, we can move on to the personnel policy, or we could do the updates and stuff first, um, and, and put the personnel policy off for as long as we can. Um.
Let's just rip the scab off.
Okay, alright. Okay, here we go, so, um, I can screen share this thing if you'd like. So hang on, I gotta get out of this one. Uh, let's see. Alright, and then we'll do it again. Whoops, okay, I guess I gotta get rid of this. And, let's see, there it is, that one up. Okay, that was easy. Oh, come on, go away. This is Microsoft trying to harass me. Go away, um. I don't want to sign in and I don't want to create an account. Alright, figured it out. Okay, so, um, let me get my, I work on these things much better with a paper copy, so I've got a paper copy and I've got some parts that I wanted to point out to us, um. So, I don't know for how much time you've had to look at the, the, um, the model policy, but there's a lot of kind of explaining of things, and then there's the actual policies. So, so there's a lot of guidance with it also, which of course will eliminate eventually, um. So, let's see, I guess I'm gonna go slow here. So here, whoops. Yeah, right at the bottom. So I'm wondering, in the definition of a full-time employee, um. You know, I put thirty hours, that's basically. Any employee that works more than thirty hours, technically they're eligible for benefits. We could keep, we could have it if, so I put thirty hours in there, but I have a question to myself. Should we, um, you know, we're talking about a full-time employee, should we make that forty hours instead? And I kind of wanted to get your opinion on that.
So Vermont law says thirty-five hours a week is considered a full-time employee.
Okay.
We might want to just be in keeping with that.
So put it at thirty-five?
Yeah, I'm just looking at Vermont law here.
Okay. All right. That sounds good, so I'll make that.
The US Department of Labor defines as thirty-five hours per week, so if they work less than that, they're considered part-time. They work more than thirty-five, they're considered full-time.
Okay. So I can't make the change right now because I only, I have view only, but I wrote a note for that.
That does, that that will mean that that our town treasurer is not gonna get benefits.
Um, the town treasurer, the town clerk, basically they don't get benefits in the personnel policy. We can establish that, but that's a whole separate. Um, agreement that we would have with them.
And we're gonna have to consider, maybe it's not part of this policy.
Well, scratch it off, Mike.
Right. Yeah, we're definitely gonna consider that. We have always offered that to them, but this personnel policy is basically for employees only.
So so I got into Vermont law, I'm in the statute, I was looking at federal law, Vermont law is thirty hours, so I misspoke.
Okay, you want to keep it at thirty then?
Yeah.
So Chris, to address your point, um, we will have a whole separate policy. Separate policy for the town clerk and the town treasurer. And according to the LCT, if they would like to receive benefits, they have to sign an agreement and there's a model agreement in this. The VLCT policy, so that's that's the plan for the town clerk and the town treasurer. Um, and I think, you know, what I'd like us to do is get this thing completed. So that we have something to present when we're looking for a new road crew member. That's that's finished and um, and then we'll just keep right in step and create um. The policy for the uh town clerk and town treasurer.
No, Michael, I have no problem with that at all, and I did see that. I just wanted to make the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so let's see, I'm just gonna kind of. Slowly move through this. So this is all kind of standard and and we have this in the policy um, pretty much already. And a lot of it is taken directly from this model policy. So here's um. So hours of service, I basically just typed in what we're, what's happening right at the moment. Um, I crossed out some of this text that was suggested, um, highlighted and read and crossed it out. Um, and this is basically from. You know, from what we're doing now. And I know we've talked about maybe changing this at some point. So um, you know, they they had a second paragraph that states regular work hours may be changed. Um, blah, blah, blah. So I think that kind of covers us, covers us if we do want to make changes.
Right, because it sets the schedule and then i- if they want to request a change in that schedule would have to be approved.
Right, or if we want to make a, if yeah, they would have to, we would have to approve it, and if they, if we want to make a change. We have the right to do that. So that's. Okay. Let's. So these are all pretty standard things which are in our policy. There, some of them aren't missing. I don't think there's anything about political activity or nepotism. Alcohol and drug use is definitely in there. And then there's a whole booklet on um, how to deal with. Substance abuse problems with employees. Tobacco use, one of the things that we um. I've noticed in the past is uh, it's pretty much just one employee, but it says no tobacco use in in any of the town vehicles. I know that that's.
Yeah, so we got to enforce that inside the garage and the vehicles, because if we could get another employee complaint.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's something that. I guess we should probably address to the road crew at some point, and that's in our current policy as it is.
And it's state law.
And it's state law, exactly, yeah. So this is all, all of this is in our.
I was gonna say in response to Paul, it's already state law.
Yeah.
What? There's, there's, there's no difficulty in conforming to the fact that we have to. We have.
No, I agree, yeah. It's just how much you're willing to to um, see but. Not make an issue of.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna, if if we see that, we're gonna have to be addressing it.
Which is fair.
Yeah, it is fair.
No, I mean, that that part's fair, but they have to be aware of it. Otherwise it's not fair.
I would be surprised, yeah, and that's why it's in the personnel policy and it is in the current personnel policy, um, so.
I mean, so it's on us to make sure that people are aware of it.
Correct, yeah, so we'll get this approved, then we'll get it dished out and Chuck can make sure they're aware.
Yeah, but part of, a part of this personnel policy, and I I don't know if we have it in our current one, is that. They basically have to sign a form that they have read the personnel policy and agree to the terms that are in it, so. That kind of comes at the end, it's it's not at the end of this model policy. So that computer stuff is all in there, public records. So here's where we um, get into the benefits, which is what we've been focused on most. Let's see. So this is all kind of guidance from VLCT. Um, and it does mention somewhere in here, um, elected officials. So and then this is my beginning to put in what's uh particular to the town. And then I just basically cut and paste the parts of our, the personal policy that we've been working on. You know, and I'm leaving in the part-time employees, even though, you know, when we technically, when we hire a third full-time person, we won't have any part-time people, but.
We should have it in there because we could.
We could in the future, right?
You know, you could have somebody get sick and need to hire somebody for an interim step and have a part-time person, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any reason to actually eliminate that.
No, I don't, I don't, yeah.
Um, I think that that should stay in, even if it's not being actively used. We'll have to revisit it in a couple of years anyway, I'm sure. But so.
Keep it in.
What?
Legacy.
Yeah, one of the things I thought I would do under paid leave time is just basically designate all of the different um. Leave times that that we um. Want to see in the policy, as as you'll notice as we go through this, there are a lot of, a lot more of them than what we have. In the policy, so. But the, this is basically what we have right now, um, that I just cut and pasted into the model policy. And I thought that that we do, I believe, we have a paid leave time request form. I know Brandy.
Do, yeah.
Yeah, so I thought we'd have that form as just another appendix within.
It should be in in the appendix.
Yeah, so that that's um, but we'll get that in there eventually.
All of this, all of this should be so readily available that it's never a question.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, so any, any of the.
We don't really have that yet.
I guess we don't have appendix, they're called annexes now, aren't they?
They are.
Yeah.
Appendix sounds nice too.
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm used to, but I notice all my books now have a, have an annex.
Annex or as opposed to a pendum. There's a pendum too, I'm not quite sure.
I can't even keep up with the words sometimes.
Right. So holiday leave times, pretty standard. One question I had, um. These are the ones that we offer. And um, there were a couple others that VLCT had on their list. One of them is what we used to call Columbus Day, and now I think it's called Indigenous. Honor.
And that's been taken away from the state employees.
Has that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And um, okay, and then there's Bennington Battle Day, which our our road crew usually kind of works on that day anyway, although.
My favorite holiday of the year.
Yeah, they could, they could take it off if they want, um, so.
I always went down and teed off Dan Kuchain at the, at the Fisher Auto Parts, I'd walk in and he's, what's, what's this one? It's Bennington Battle Day. Everybody else had to work except me.
Right, okay, so we'll keep these as as they are.
Actually, can I, can I, can I just ask?
Sure.
Um, can we just perfectly mirror the state on this?
We could.
Yes, we could, in which case.
Why would we not mirror the state?
Well, that's pretty much what we do, the following, I mean, as you can see in the text.
Well, I guess I can't.
Holidays shall be observed on the day that the state observes them. And I don't know if they have extra, I don't.
I'm gonna look here real quick for you, Mike.
Okay.
So we got New Year's, Martin Luther King. President Day, oh, excuse me, yeah, President's Day. They give Town Meeting Day off.
Right.
Memorial Day, Independence Day, Bennington Battle Day, Labor Day. Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day and Christmas. So. The one I could see is we'd have to add Town Meeting if we're gonna do that.
Uh huh.
I certainly would.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Um, I mean, I really, I feel that Town Meeting Day, everybody should get it off so they can go to Town Meeting.
Yeah, so I I agree with Chris, I think we should, that's the state right off the state employee uh, calendar.
Exactly what the state calendar does, and then we just don't have to worry about it.
Okay, so I'm gonna add Town Meeting Day. I've always wanted, I've always felt that that should be there anyway, and then the other thing that, other thing that we do, um, if you look at the, after the listing of the hall. Holidays, um. Either for Thanksgiving or for Christmas, um, there's an extra day. That can be attached to it. So like, you know, traditionally Thanksgiving is on a Thursday and a lot of people like to take Friday off and finish up deer season. Or whatever.
So so for the state employees, they call that the day after Thanksgiving, which is at the discretion of the administration, but it is a holiday. Uh, but every year the governor has to say, yes, you can have it off, but I worked, I just retired, I worked there for thirty-three years and always had it off.
Okay, so what what we say is that um. All full-time and part-time employees shall receive one additional paid floating holiday associated with either Thanksgiving or Christmas, but not.
Perfect, yep, that's perfect.
Okay, all right, so we'll. Hang on. So the other one, um. So here's one that was a little confusing to me at first, um, and. It's the part that's highlighted in yellow, um, so full-time employees will receive holiday pay at their regular rate of pay. And may count the holiday hours paid towards hours actually worked when returning, determining overtime compensation.
I can explain that.
Yeah, I wish Brandy was here because I don't think that we do that.
Okay, because because uh, the the state's pretty specific in hours actually work, so a sick day is not considered hours actually work. So if I were to take Monday off sick and I working for the state. Uh, and then get out eight hours of sick time, and then on Tuesday I work twelve hours. The overtime rate would wouldn't apply till I had worked. Eight hours, a full eight hours, so those four hours would be compensated at straight time.
Okay.
That prevents someone from work, you know, working overtime, and then the next day they call in sick. That's so, so they they, but a holiday they've always considered as time actually work. So if you have an eight-hour holiday on Monday, then Friday you work two hours overtime, you know, work ten hours and it would be considered overtime, and I think that's fair.
Okay. All right, it seems, and and my memory that um, that Brandy has not let them claim overtime if they. Had a, you know, had a hall, if there was a holiday in the week, they'd have to.
That's not in keeping with state policy, I I'm, I think we should. Do let them, I mean, a holiday is considered time work.
Okay, all right.
I I think we should be ridiculously consistent.
Well, VLCT and their version of the of the personnel policy, which I include here in the highlighted part, they have holiday leave. That is not actually worked by an employee will not be included in calculating overtime for that employee, so that's different from the state.
Right, that's different, so.
And I'm fine with key, I'm fine with having it either way, um, I just wanted us to be aware that there is a difference.
Doing.
Yeah, um.
Well, I guess my question is, why, I mean, so the Vermont League of Citizens Council has a ton of great stuff for us. But I also question whether or not we should just. Stay as consistent as we can with what the state mandates are, what the.
Yeah, that's, that's our, that's our choice. We, you know, this is a model policy from VLCT, they're. Basically, I'll pretty much always side on the side of the municipality, so here, by not counting the holiday pay. Holiday leave as the actual time worked, they're saving the town eight hours of pay and overtime.
Right, so what you could do is just unstrike that and it would put it into what what we're saying.
Yeah, we could, we could keep it, we could, the part that I striked out. And put a question mark beside is is the way the personnel policy is now, and we can leave it.
I think we should leave it that way.
Okay, so we'll leave, we'll leave that that way, um, let me make a note of that. Okay, yeah, now these are just differences that I wanted us to discuss, so.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so everything else has been cut and pasted. So vacation leave, I just simplified this, and I guess I had already done that, I think. Um, you know, we had it based on for part-time, based on twenty hours a week and for the um. Town clerk and town treasurer based on eighteen hours a week and um, so I just wrote that it's prorated. Okay, so here's another part that I highlighted. So this is something that I thought we should discuss, um, just based on my. Knowledge of the past, um, what happened to a past uh, town employee, a road foreman, um, so. It's in the, it's in the paragraph that's highlighted, so we have that a employee may accrue no more than a hundred and sixty hours of vacation time. And um, the maximum for a part-time would be prorated. Any additional unused accrued vacation leave will be forfeited, um, so if they. If they got to a hundred and sixty hours, um, you know, they couldn't accrue anymore.
Right.
We. Um, they'd actually basically um, have to be paid for it.
I I think employees should be paid for unused leave time at separation regardless of how they become separated.
Yeah, and I think that.
We terminate them or whatever the deal is, that's just fair.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, that's the part that I wanted to bring up, um, so. In 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 our current policy, you know, it says, uh, uh, um. Provided that the employee gives at least two weeks written notice of resignation, so I'm aware of a road crew member that um. Pretty much quit, um, there was some bad blood going on, um. And the town denied all of the vacation time that they had accrued, which always seemed kind of unfair to me.
I don't, I don't think that's right, because there's no law that says you gotta give two weeks notice.
Right, so what, um, so what I'll do is basically strike the last part of that sentence. If everyone's okay with that.
Yes.
The the VLCT version is underneath in green and that doesn't have. Provided that the employee gives at least two weeks written notice of resignation.
The reality is that any employee has, you know, their ETO is earned.
Correct.
And has to be paid for.
I agree.
And, and I think that Paul stated it very nicely. Two weeks notice is a really nice thing, that would.
You don't have to give it.
You don't have to, by law, you don't have to.
Right.
So your ETO you own, and we need to keep up with that.
Yeah, and in a sense, this may, you know, it was never challenged, but that could be totally illegal.
I think it's illegal.
I think that that actually straight up.
Yeah, because we can, we don't combine the sick leave and the uh, uh, vacation time, so the sick leave is not paid. I just turned in twenty-eight hundred hours. Didn't get paid for, um, but my my annual leave, my vacation time, you get paid for it, I think that's fair.
Yeah, okay, so I'll strike that last part of that. Yep, okay, so I'll strike that last part of that sentence. Okay, all right, so moving on. So this all gets very confusing. I've read it a couple times.
One quick question for you, Mike. We weren't, we're not paying anybody at the end of a calendar year for unused leave time, except when they leave, correct? Remember, we had quite a long, cuz we had people turning in, they, we want them to use their time, okay?
Yes, yeah.
And then we're gonna work, Chuck's gotta approve, so we don't have. People taking, cuz just to update, cuz we had people taking the whole month of June off, and we're not gonna be okay with that.
I think, I think that's stated right.
That's with the leave slips. Yeah, we gotta get it approved.
Let me get it back up here. So, okay, so that kind of defines people. I know it's, I know it's, it was in our current policy as a new change, so.
I didn't see that it was in there. I knew we had taken it out, the, cuz. The problem is someone wants to turn in a hundred and sixty hours every year, it's gonna turn into a big expense for us, and that's not the idea for vacation time.
Yeah, I think somewhere, I think we'll find it. I think it's.
Okay, no worries, we can keep going.
Yeah, let's keep going here. So. All right, so sick leave. So this, this whole thing, I still find kind of confusing, the guidance. I might check in with Jill Muir about it, but. She's never mentioned some of the questions I have about this when she's reviewed it, so I think we're okay, but. So, okay, so all accrued or unused sick time will not be paid out, time of separation. And then there's criteria, which is basically, we, what we have is the same as. What VLCT is recommending. The one thing that we add. And I, one of the questions I had was, should we make it a separate line item, is that. An employee may also use sick leave to attend appointments that cannot be held outside normal working hours. There is a section of the text in here where. In VLCT's version, where they're encouraging an employee. To not, you know, to try not to schedule within working hours, but sometimes you don't have a choice.
I know, I, it just becomes a goalie thing.
Yeah, yeah. So I could make this last sentence a part one, a separate line item in this, or we could leave it bunch together. It is kind of. It is a little bit different from the beginning.
You could just add another, that'd be, I don't.
Okay, all right, so that, I'll, just so it's a little clear and stands out better.
As long as it stays in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just. That's important.
I'll put it separate so that it's, it's a, it doesn't get overlooked, or it's a little more clear to whoever reading it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, here we go. Let's see. Which way am I going? Okay, so here's VLCT's version. They don't mention. That at all. And these, the five reasons that they have listed, which we also have listed, are basically state law also.
Right, which we gotta follow, so.
Yeah, which we have to follow, yeah. Okay. So this, there might have text here. Okay, here it is, Paul. I just saw where to go.
It's right there, carryover paid leave, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, okay, if the. At the end of the year, the town will compensate employees at their regular rate of pay for accrued unused sick leave hours.
So you pay them for their unused sick, sick hours?
No, no, not sick time.
No.
Oh, okay.
But any of the other paid leave time.
So is the league saying that if they don't use leave by the end of the year, that we do have to pay them? Is that what the rule is?
Well, it depends on how we, how we pay it out. So there's two ways that they mentioned that, that it could be paid out. You can pay, just pay it out in a lump sum at the beginning of a fiscal year. And then anything that they don't use, basically, they have it if, and then if you, if they are accruing hours of, of leave time. And they haven't used it. Let's see, if the municipality will pay out employees for unused sick leave time at the end of the year, insert the, okay, so that's only if, if.
That's in sick leave too. I was more concerned about the annual leave, the vacation time.
Uh huh, yeah. Okay, well, so I'm not really sure how to answer that question, but maybe.
Well, this has always been the sticky way, cuz I was trying to get memory, you're trying to have it assigned monthly so that the carryovers were easy, but that got a little convoluted for some.
Yeah. So I guess it's our choice. A town will or will not compensate eligible employees for unused accrued sick leave. At the time of separation from employment.
Correct, cuz nobody does that that I know, unless you have combined time off, which we don't have.
Yeah, I, I think that that's really uncommon.
Okay, so the next thing on the model policy. There's all of these other types of leave. There's bereavement leave. There's parental and family leave, which may be.
You have to do.
We have to do.
We don't have a choice about that. I mean, some of these are before, we don't have a.
Yeah, this one, that one you gotta do.
Okay, it's not in our personnel policy right at the moment, so.
That has to be, like, that.
They're good catch, probably good that we jumped and grabbed this policy, Michael, cuz this was a big skip that we didn't have that.
Right.
That's huge.
Yeah, no, I think it's good that we're doing this, you know. Using their model and. Okay, the short-term family leave.
Also by law.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Right. So any of them where they say, according to state statute, blah, 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 I will put it in there.
If you see VSA, there it is.
Okay, so there's crime victim leave.
Yeah.
Yep.
So leave of absence without pay.
This is an option for us to use.
It is an option for us to use.
Yeah, I mean, if we have someone that we wanna put on a probationary period because of some infraction or something like that.
Yeah.
Or they wanna take a three-month sabbatical and do it without pay.
Yep.
I think it's a good policy to put in place.
Yeah, I think if you don't have a policy, then you're gonna be wrestling with it, cuz again, it would have to be approved. Cuz, you know, obviously, there's filling in consideration, cuz it could happen. Someone could say they're. Dealing with cancer, or they're dealing with something that's beyond the family leave. They may actually wanna take.
Right.
A month or six, six months off.
Where their spouse is deployed, which goes to.
Right, right, they're not gonna get paid, but they want their job back when they come back.
But they want their job back when they get home, because they're gonna go with their spouse.
Correct. So I think it's good to have in there, it's then someone could use it if they needed to.
I agree.
We're not having to make it up as we go.
The word policy just brought something into my memory from reading this over earlier today, but I'll bring it up after we go through these. It's, it's the. Basically, the on-call. Policy. I know that we have one, but I don't know if it's actually written down somewhere, but let's not talk about it right now. Let's get through these. And then I'll bring that, bring that up.
Michael?
Yes, Robin.
On the, for the unpaid leave, can you scroll back down a little bit?
Yep, hang on, let me get there.
If you're adding town meeting to your list of holidays, I don't think you need to have that first. A request would take unpaid.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to.
Attending town meeting, gotcha.
Yep. That is the way some towns do it. They just. You have to get an okay from, like, the road commissioner or whatever to take Town Meeting Day off, and it's just an unpaid. Unpaid time, but.
Right.
Yep, okay. Okay. All right. Good eye, Robin. Tells me you're following along with this. Okay, so the military leave, jury leave. Now, I think military leave, basically. Obviously, they aren't paid for it, but we do have to. Reserve their job, I think.
Yes, for a certain amount of time, correct?
A time, yeah. So jury leave. I think we have to let them go if they're called, but we don't have to pay them. Players are not legally required to compensate their employees for jury service.
That's because they should get compensation.
They get right from court.
Right.
Get paid by the court system.
Yeah.
Not as much, but they do get.
They do get compensation, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, and we'll, so we'll keep this in there, I assume. Okay, so here we get to our. Comp time. So, and then I hear, I've cut. And pasted in what we have. And there is one change. I think that. Right in the very beginning, after the. In the first sentence, it's in red. We have employees entitled to be paid for overtime. Shall request compensatory. Satorry time, and I think that we should change the shall to may, cuz basically what we're saying is that. If they're entitled to pay for overtime, that we require them to request. Compensatory time by saying shall. So I think in that instance, we should. Change the shall to may. There's another. Part of this text where shall. That word is appropriate. And I just wanted to get your take on, on that, what you think of that. Is it, cuz that first sentence is, it's almost like we're requiring them instead of. Being paid overtime, that they request. The payment of overtime as a comp time. Is that your take on how the, the word shall works?
In lieu of overtime pay, so, so I think that that should say they may request compensatory time off.
That's my feeling too.
Yeah, they may request it, cuz again, you could say no. That's gonna be the road commissioner's choice.
Exactly, yeah.
Shall, shall is a statement.
Yes, I know.
Right. So I think it needs to say they, they can request time. They can request to have it as comp time. And if it's approved, you can accrue up, you know, there's the rules for it.
Right. I made that change in my paper copy, but I wanted to check. With, with you guys.
It's really good to have these limits and the approvals, cuz the state got into me for three hundred hours one time. The problem with comp time is, real quick, you can outpace your ability to even take it off.
Yeah.
You know, and that, pretty soon. The town, they had to ask me to leave for a month and a half, so, and use something like time, cuz they didn't wanna pay me.
Yeah. There is the VLCT wording, you can accrue an incredible amount of comp time, so I, I think keeping it at forty hours. Definitely will keep our town treasurer a little less stressed. So, and this is. Rogue Commissioner.
Agreed.
All right.
Well, as I say, you chime in, Chuck, if something sounds off here, so.
Oh, I'm listening.
Okay, so we're, oh, I'm trying to find the part where it says shall, which may seem to make sense, okay.
It's the sentence just before the bullet point.
Yeah. Shall accrue, yeah, okay.
May, you could just say, in lieu of overtime pay. Full-time employees may request compensatory time off.
Yeah, yeah. So the bullets are basically stated in the text, but I think having them. Just for clarity, having them as bullets.
Yep.
Can't hurt to say it twice.
Nope.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty much what we've had before. There's nothing, no surprises there. And then here is where. You know, cannot accrue more than two hundred and forty hours of comp time, and then accrued overtime hours in excess of four hundred and eighty or two hundred must be paid. I can't imagine accruing.
Yeah, we're not doing, cuz the state, the state highway, they can only have eighty.
Eighty, really, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, so I agree with Paul.
Yeah, cuz again, you, you'll be gone all the time. You'll get done plowing, and you can take the whole summer off. That's the problem. Yeah, so we just, we'd rather just pay people.
Yeah, so we'll keep it at forty. So then some of this text we have in our own. Okay, and so that's, let's see. So. Trying to get my mouse to go where I wanted to, okay. So the rest of this, for a good stretch, is all boilerplate stuff that we have in the policy. I did, you know, just add these on whose, you know, if there's a complaint for harassment, that it would either go to the road commissioner or the. Select Board Chair, which in turn, then it would go to the select board. Come on, mouse.
Broke it?
No, I just, I'm kind of at the end of my, the edge of my surface to make it work.
You need a bigger mouse pad, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Try moving your desk.
Well, I have this kind of funky shelf desk for this laptop, and. I need space for my knees.
If you're a Dilbert fan, that was in one of his comic strips, the boss was moving his desk cuz he ran out of mouse pad.
Well, that would actually help in this case. Okay, so this is sexual harassment. That's all kind of boilerplate.
Date stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
And identify who they go to, yeah.
Yeah, so this is in our, this is, the employee discipline isn't our personnel policy. Word for word, as what we see here. And then this part, I did make a little bit of a change. So in the one bullet, refusing to do assigned work or failing to carry out the reasonable assignments of a road foreman or road commissioner, and then I just added. For the sake of the road foreman or road commissioner, that. Select Board members must make work requests to the road commissioner.
Not to the road people, yep. And that makes perfect sense, yep.
Yeah, hassling the road crew about it. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay.
That, I really appreciated the fact that it was gonna be that supervisory level.
Yeah.
That would be conversation, so.
Okay, good, so.
Good choice.
Sounds like we're in approval of that. So this is a part that we don't have in the personnel policy, which Jill Muir highly suggested that we do. This is a process for basically firing someone, and it states the. The different steps, which we've talked about, you know, verbal, whatever, and documenting.
Written, yeah.
Then written, blah, blah, blah. And this basically covers the town for any legal stuff that a disgruntled employee might try to. Induce upon the town. If we follow this procedure, we're, we're pretty much. Good. And then severability is, is pretty much boilerplate. And that's pretty much it. And then. Let's see, there's the different. Addendums, that's what they call them. So this is the form that an employee would sign after reading the personnel policy, basically acknowledging that they received a copy and that they're familiar with it. And etc. So if there is something in the personnel policy that. They get called on and they've signed this, then it's basically, you know, their responsibility. So that, you know, we'll include that. And then this is. This is the form. That an elected officer would sign off on if they, they are eligible for benefits. So just to make that clear. An elected, especially town clerk, town treasurer, or, and the case of larger municipalities, other elected officials. Are eligible for benefits. And that, you know, so will work out, and we have had in the old policy benefits that they were eligible for. Which I, I have a rough draft of those. I just basically cut from the. Current policy what those were. And put it in this new document to, to formalize. And then what's suggested by VLCT and is done by most municipalities is that. They basically, they're eligible, but they have to choose what benefits they want. It's not up to the select board, because they're elected officials, we can't really dictate to them. What, what they can choose, so. And it is on a prorated basis, it's my understanding at the moment, so, you know. The town clerk, our town clerk and town treasurer work a certain number of hours, so it wouldn't be like they would get full benefits. They would get prorated benefits based on the number. Of hours that they work. So they're choosing to do this, so they, they're technically, again, for liability issues or just a clear understanding, there's a, this agreement that's, that's basically signed. Which I think we should do. We haven't done that, to my knowledge.
I think that this is important, because that means that there's some clarity about expectations.
Exactly. And usually they're.
I think it's really unfair that we haven't. Haven't given, given these folks some understanding of exactly what they're.
Well, no, they're, we usually always come to clarity, but it's verbally.
Right, this is better.
Yeah, this is better, yeah.
So much better.
Yeah.
Having it as a formal document that is signed is.
I agree. I, anytime for, I think. I agree. Anytime for, I think just about anything, a document that is signed solve can solve a lot of problems.
Yeah, because then everybody's aware of what they're
Exactly what's happening.
Yeah, or should have been.
Yeah. So so this is pretty much the end of it. So the plan is to get the personnel policy finished and we're pretty, we're pretty much there. Tegan has agreed to help with that. I think what I'll do is is get all of the wording, get all of the guidance out and try to clear up this one issue that I have. That I'm not even clear enough on to to explain to you guys about they there seem to be using accrued and sick leave time and personal time at different times. And I'm wondering what they actually mean with that. So I was going to talk to Jill Muir about that part.
Okay.
And
Do you think we might be ready to vote on this at the next meeting in three weeks?
Yes, definitely.
Perfect.
Yeah, so I'm going to get the wording in the way it is. And then Tegan, I think is much more skilled at actually making the thing look nice, you know, get get it formatted in a way that's that's that actually looks presentable. I could probably fumble and curse and get it there eventually, but I'm sort of
Be jealous, Mike Lynn, my new job, I have an editor. Ah, I got assigned an editor. It's like, wow, except they call up with hard questions.
Uh huh, yeah.
But they make what you, they make me look like a genius.
So I'm 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 pretty much assuming and hoping that Tegan can help help with that part and save me some aggravation. So I'm going to get get rid of this. Are there any questions at all? Robin, Chuck, you know, you're welcome to.
My brain hurts now.
Okay. All right. So yeah, having three weeks will be good. I don't, it won't take me very long to now that I, you know, have your okays on some of the questions, it shouldn't take me very long to get get it to get all of the extra stuff out and then I'll hand it off to Tegan and she will make it look good. I'm sure. And then we're then we're pretty much done. We can and so the other part of that would be is that we would send this back to the LCT for their lawyers to vet. And the fact that we've used their model template should
Should make it okay.
Could should make it a slam dunk. And hopefully we would have it back by our next meeting.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
And you would want, I think we got to get a copy of the leave form that we made put into that.
Yeah, I've got to get that from Brandy so that can be added at the end. And then the actual, we do have
We're just a link, a link to the
Yeah, could be. Yeah, yep.
Right, could be a link, although
It's gonna be a digital phone anyway. So
Yeah.
Terms should work.
Yeah, and if, but if we have a paper copy that can be included with a personnel policy, I would assume that we would probably be handing our employees a paper copy of this.
Probably. Have to be some formatting that has to be done because it's not formatted for that. It's for a digital, for digital. It's not formatted for someone to do it by hand.
Oh, the that the leave form?
Yep.
Okay. I'll check with Rick, I'll check with Brandy about that.
I see exactly. That's a good point. Yeah.
Yep, it's not formatted for someone to do it by hand at all.
Okay.
It's formatted to be a
Yeah, so maybe just an attachment because I think it is a good idea to have it filled out electronically anyway, so you can read it.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So with any luck, we will have it back from BLCT. I'll try to do those changes. Well, not much time. I don't have much time this week, but hopefully the maybe over the weekend, so it could head down to the LCT by early of early next week. See. Okay, so updates and other business. So we talked briefly about this library roof repair. There was another contractor that was interested. I I emailed them and just said, you know, have you had a chance to look at the roof? Are you still interested? I got no response at all. But I will. I will actually make a phone call to the person. And I will get him back in touch with this person who just sent us the bid this evening, this afternoon, and let him know that that's way beyond our budget.
So that's the only bid you got, Mike?
That's the only bid I have right at the moment. I have this one other contractor who's local who said that he was interested. He also mentioned that he was very busy, but he would try to work it in. He used to actually live in Woodbury.
Part, part of this is your materials cost. I mean, the sheet a half inch CDX is a hundred dollars, ninety five dollars a seat.
Yeah.
Yeah, should be 15.
Yeah, yeah. So that's part of what's driving up this cost and which isn't surprising hearing about the construction costs. The contractor that did respond also in a conversation with him, he warned that on the specs for the
The shingles, I saw that.
Yeah. So and I would, I told him that we would just go with, you know, that with that or whatever he felt was best. He mentioned that there had been problems with this.
Right. He's proposing the GAF timber line.
Yeah.
Well, if we can get another quote, at least we'll have some kind of idea if this guy's in the ballpark. But
Right.
My fear is that he might be with current material costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is essentially untenable.
Correct.
Yeah, because that's a lot. I mean, we we could come up with the money. You know, basically the library, the line, yeah.
If we do a little bit of triage and wait, we're going to pay half.
Right, because I think we're getting bombed by material costs.
We're getting killed by material costs right now.
Because it's four times what they're five times what it ought to be material wise.
Really bad timing for for a project like this.
I know it is. Yeah.
And so maybe we do, we invest in a little bit of repair work and we wait until
Well, have you looked? Have you looked at the shingles?
No.
Chris, have you looked at the, okay. We're kind of pushing our limit, I think, at least in that one section. The more, you know, the more south facing section, it looks pretty good.
If we end up having to do, maybe we could switch the project to half or something to
Right, just do the
Totally kill ourselves. We've only budgeted $10,000, right?
Well, this, this is the thing. The library is going to be paying for this. So and they they are expecting, you know, we got a quote from Larry Eldred before material costs were skyrocketing of he mentioned that it would be seven or eight thousand dollars and then we added a couple thousand in case the
So we got it around 10. Yeah.
Around 10 works, well, we're expecting to pay $10,000.
Yeah, so it's it's three times anyway.
Yeah.
So 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 I did hear from some folks in town indirectly. And they were a little bit aggravated with 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 me, with us, I guess, because the last time that we worked on this project. When we built the structure.
Yes.
Those people came together and just did it.
Right. And there were people with the knowledge to do that.
Yeah, there are.
On that project. That's
And there are, there are people who are willing to give the guidance if we can have people who are willing to help out with the work.
Uh huh.
And then it's just material costs, which are still going to be high.
Yeah.
We don't have any actual labor costs because it becomes a two day town project over a weekend.
Right. And if if the people doing the labor are volunteers, there's no liability issues for the town.
Exactly.
At all.
I think that we could get away with this in a different way, and maybe it's actually something that we should discuss.
I'm I'm willing to to look at the volunteer labor. I just want those that are gonna propose this need to be the overseers and the managers. To get it done, advertise, get the dumpster, you know, that's that's my only thing.
Yeah, all right. So Chris, I I'm going to appoint you.
Yep, I think it's worth for me to pursue.
I'm appointing you as the chair of the ad hoc committee for for the town volunteers to reshingle this library roof and I expect a full report of
Because I agree, it is achievable. It's just what happens sometimes is that the ones proposing it are not the ones that want to push it and oversee it. And that's all I want to make sure doesn't happen.
I think I can find enough people to to oversee it. And then I can, I think I can drag out enough people that maybe
Sure, okay.
I'm willing to be one of the the lackeys doing whatever. I mean, I have reshingled roofs before, but I don't have the knowledge.
Throw my back in it too, but I don't want to be in charge of it.
Right.
Well, I think that's fair. So
So we need to come up with somebody who is willing, who has the knowledge and is willing to be in charge of it.
Yep, I'm willing to be appointed and
Okay.
I will find that person.
Okay, all right.
Because it is a fairly easy roof. It's just a matter of getting the right stuff there and we could hammer it out in a day or two.
Right. Yeah, and I and I will contract this other contractor who was interested and just see if they're still interested and
Otherwise, we won't be shingling the roof this year.
That's the reality.
Right.
We just can't do it.
Right. Most contractors, you know, and again, it's a product of the pandemic. They're just totally booked in either doing re, you know, reconstruction or whatever.
Everybody's got lots of money right now and they're spending it on building materials.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so the sooner the better. We have, you know, we can't do anything, of course, until
closes. We got to get it done before school starts.
We have to get it done before
We basically have late June, July and early August.
Yep.
So we've got like basically two months spread out.
Two months.
I mean, that's enough time for us to get the materials and three or four days to get the work done, which probably could be done in a day and a half if we do it right.
The other, the other thing that I think I sent you guys the RFP, but look at the scope of work because we do also need to replace the fascia and the and the soffits. They're so and I think we can get maybe Larry Elder to look at it. And I think we together, we could come up with a solution for the entryway to the library where the corner that that part that comes out from the library where the corner meets on the roof, the water has run right into the wood. It doesn't drip off the drip edge, the way it comes down in that channel. It's run right into the wood and those are totally rotten. So we've got to figure out a way to keep the water from getting onto the fascia and the and the soffits there.
The reality is that once the, once the shingling on the roof is off, we're going to find a lot of other problems.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, you probably are.
Because this guy was planning to just put half inch CDX over the whole thing.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
He he prepriced that of stripping the shingles and sheeting the whole building. Because if you have bad sheeting, the shingles don't last.
Exactly.
No, and there's no point.
Right. Now you're wasting your money.
Wasting all our time and and our money. So.
So, okay, so we're, looks like we're we're good there. Emergency
I'll have some answers in three weeks.
Okay, all right. Perfect. That's perfect. Yep. So the emergency generator, I just wanted to mention that we did meet with someone from Brookfield Services a couple weeks ago, 10 days ago or so. Members of the fire department were there and the whole select board was there and Larry Eldred and Don Turgeon from the school were there. We basically got a basic lesson lesson in in kind of the overseeing of the maintenance, basically how to check for the oil and the coolant. And then some other kind of troubleshooting that we might need to do on the fly. We and the fire department has agreed to do, I think it's a monthly check of the the coolant and the oil level in the in the engine for the generator when they do the their checks on their trucks and stuff. So they'll be they'll be doing the overseeing of the kind of basic maintenance. And we had discussed previously and a little bit there about whether we wanted to change the contract. And I'm not sure what the contract dates are, but whether we want to change the contract to have Brookfield Services come twice a year. Right now they're coming once a year for a major kind of inspection maintenance. I would, I would be feel a little bit better based on what happened if if they did start coming twice a year.
I agree.
Okay. And then the other part that we had mentioned was that there would be a site assessment to get a sense of whether we needed to upgrade the generator, replace it, get a larger one, etc. And I think from that meeting, we we basically, this is my memory, is that the site assessment can't really happen until somebody can get, an electrician can get into the school. So we're thinking that that site assessment would probably happen sometime during the summer when school isn't in session, when there would
You got to check what the full load is of everybody connected to it.
Yeah, so that'll happen sometime, probably this this summer.
Yeah, it's got to be over the summer.
Yep. Okay, so
And we should also consider it potentially in that site assessment, whether or not it has to be moved. We don't think it does.
Yes.
Right, we don't, I know the propane tank probably will.
Right. The
Moves, that means that there's going to be a longer run existing slab for the generator, which can take a much larger generator if we wanted it to. You know, that should be included.
Yes, and I will, that fellow from Dubois and King, that's that's doing the design work for the stormwater litigation basins that we've been talking about. He, there were some test pits dug in the town park last, actually, was it, it was, yeah, last week on Thursday. And he's got to come back up sometime this week. He put some pipes in it and he's kind of overseeing the drainage that's there. So he has to come back up to remove those test pipes and to check them out. I'm hoping that I'll be able to be there, maybe arrange for him to come when I can meet with him. And we're going to go over to that site where the the fuel tank is buried and where the generator is. And I just get his assessment of whether or not that tank would be need, would need to be moved. It seems pretty obvious that that it would be because the whole point of those infiltration basins is to have the water infiltrate into the ground around them. And the generator is like 10 feet away.
And I also had the question, Mike, whether it was going to extend into under the basketball court there.
Right, yeah, yeah. So so yeah.
It wasn't, but I don't know if
You didn't think it went that far? Okay.
No, it was, it wouldn't do that.
Okay, all right.
But I don't think he, I don't know if he was aware that there was a buried tank there, fuel tank there or not. I don't think he was.
Don't check with me. I walked over it many times and told you it was above ground. So don't
Yes.
I, there was a problem that I had right from the get go. So
Yes, I know. You mentioned it.
Sometimes you miss the obvious when you're not looking.
Yeah, sometimes things just disappear in your in your foresight. So
Right.
I guess my, Michael, where are these test wells? Where are these test pores? Exactly.
These are for another series of infiltration basins.
But where are they put in? Exactly. Where are those?
Well, we, you were part of the review that we did for the first two, I think. Yeah, so these are, there's two more that are being that the fellow was working on 60% designs for. One is would be placed but out back between the fire station and the post office.
Right.
And then the other was originally for Church Street and it was going to be placed next to the Methodist Church. But there's a bunch of ledge there. So
Yeah, it's all ledge, actually.
Yeah. So and then the the engineer thought, well, maybe we could do it across the road. It's part of the
It's a different, it's a different gradient.
Yeah, so the way I'm thinking now is that, you know, this was originally designed for Church Street and I guess it was somehow was going to connect the stuff on the lower part of Catta Road. And they found a lot of ledge. Yeah, where they were digging in the town park. So it just, at this point, to me, it seems like there's no feasible site for it. So I think that my feeling is, is that we should probably just let this thing go and not try to do something there. And, you know, we did what we what we could, but there's no feasible site for it.
Thursday, when I was talking with him, he admitted himself that it probably wasn't feasible to do. Because it's going to be over by church. It was going to be taking parent 14, the bottom of Cabot Road.
Yeah. Original plan, yeah.
It's really going to miss it all now. All it's going to catch is what's coming down the Cabot Road.
Which we already have something for. Right, yes. So my feeling was that, you know, I'll get in touch with him and also also get in touch with the regional planning commission person that's overseeing this because I, you know, I think he's probably going to want to try to do some kind of 60% design thing because he would get paid for it. But I think that they would be money. he would get paid for it, but I think that they would be money, it's, you know, th- this is all part of a grant, I think it's just money that we're wasting, really. If there's no, if there's no feasible site, then why?
All we had to do was run GPR over that for two, two transects. And we would have known. And if they were worth their salt, they would have figured that out within one traverse.
So explain what GPR is to the uneducated.
So, ground penetrating radar is a way to basically bounce a radar signal off the subsurface.
Yeah.
And you can find where the bedrock is, it takes basically, you know, twenty-five to thirty minutes.
Yeah, okay.
And if they'd done that, this design would have been entirely different.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if it had just stepped around a little more, I think it would have been, you can see ledge down there everywhere.
You see ledge all over the place, Chuck. It sounded like it wasn't sneaking up on us.
No, it's sticking right up.
No, it's sticking up on the ground, there are outcrops there, for heaven's sakes.
So, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's flawed in its original design in a way, so, yes, I.
It should, it should have, you know, in a way, this, you know, it was based on people that did a broad town survey and and it was suggested to put it by the Methodist Church, but, you know, the people that did that probably should have done a little more due diligence for the ledge to begin with.
Maybe just walk around a bit.
Right, right, well, the, these were Burlington people, you know, so maybe that's part of it, I don't know. I shouldn't say that, but yeah.
I, I don't, I don't really care where they're from, I just know that that doesn't, that's not gonna work.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's what I'm gonna, and I, and I, I'm glad that I have your support in, in suggesting that. So, one final thing, the American Rescue Plan Act. You sure, go ahead.
Did he mention anything to you about the one over behind the annex by the skating rink?
Uh, no, that one, we've looked at a sixty percent design for, and we, no, we did give him suggestions when he showed it to us. And at some point, he'll come back to us with a hundred percent design.
Well, he's got a ninety now, about a ninety, and.
Okay, is that what he said, okay.
Looking like that one's gonna get shot down too.
Okay.
Because with the, the amount of insulation they're gonna put under it and over it, because it gets piled up through there, no deeper, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be about three times the cost that they thought it was gonna be.
Okay, so.
Chuck, we talked to him about that when he first brought it up.
Yeah.
We did, we did.
We did, we talked to him about it right from the get-go, so if he's not reading it.
Yeah, and he mentioned that the, the type that he would be putting in would be probably okay with that, yeah.
So.
They said, well, he still seems thinking it'll work, but it's only gonna be like five inches deep, you know.
That's not gonna.
Oh, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard that, but.
Fundamentally flawed right from the outset.
We agreed that when we get the parking lot done the way we want it up to school, that it's not gonna be worth, worthwhile putting it in.
Yeah, I wouldn't think there'd be much going there.
We're catching most of it uphill now.
Yeah, and on the other side of the road, yeah.
Yeah, so, that, he, I, I'm assuming he's gonna want to talk to you about that, because he said he'd be up and wanted to meet with us.
Okay.
So, he didn't say he just went.
I'll try to, I'll try to find a time that he can come up, the catch with me is that I usually have, you know, Tuesdays and Fridays are open times for me, with the exception of this week, where I'm pretty much working all, you know, every day, but so when, when, you know, his coming up on Thursday, there was, I just, I couldn't be there, and I would have liked to have been, but it's just the way it is.
Yeah, well, sorry, I, I should, I should tell you guys, I'm on this project in Maine right now, which is why I'm sitting on a porch talking to you.
Oh, you're in Maine?
I am, yeah, so, I'm, I'm on, I'm on a porch, the place that I can get cell phone service enough to talk to you. So, but if you tell me some dates, I can be, I can try to be there, I just have to schedule around my field time.
Okay, when will you, when will you be back in, in Woodbury?
Yeah, you tell me and I'll make my way back.
Well, if I tried to, well, I don't want to, it's a long drive, I'm gonna try to have something happen.
About three hours, so it's not that bad.
Well, I mean, we don't have to. I can, I can contact him and express my concern about the the site that's being tested right at the moment, and, and just saying that we feel we should just drop that entirely, and then if we want to talk more about the, you know, by the skating rink, you know, we could do that at a different time when you're, when you're back.
Yep, that's fine.
Done your field work.
And I'd like Chuck to be there, I'd like, I'll be there if he can be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there.
So why don't we wait until you're a little bit more firm on when you would be here?
If you guys make a date, I'll find a way to get there.
Well, I don't want to make you drive all the way back from Maine and then have to go back, unless you really want to do that.
I can make it work. I've driven a lot further for less.
Okay, do you think we need to do this as soon as possible, or do you think it could wait for a bit?
Uh, I think we need to do it in the summertime.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
Definitely.
So, I, I really don't.
Are you gonna be in Maine all summer?
No, no, I'll be back, I'm back and forth all the time, so.
Okay, alright, so I'll, I'll, I'll get some dates and, and I'll send them out, and if it doesn't work for you, we'll change, we'll make it different.
I will make it work, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna base it around my schedule, I can find a way.
Alright, okay, alright, okay. So, just briefly, yeah, it's time to, time to be done here. I would like to, I did do a webinar with, that the LCT had about the American Rescue Plan Act, and it was basically pretty much the same thing that was in that thing that Bonnie Waniger, the Director of CVRPC, sent to me that I sent out to you guys. But she, Bonnie has volunteered or said that she would be glad to meet with us at a, at a select board meeting to go over things that, the, the plan itself and what the town, what the criteria, criteria for eligibility is, different projects. So I thought I would invite her to come to our next meeting also.
Yeah, because Chance, Chance and I were looking at our, the things we've lost and what we spent on mitigation and response to stuff over the last year and a half, and our stuff has added up pretty high, so we're gonna start getting those numbers together.
Okay, and she could probably, you know, if you and Chance, well, you'll be here obviously at a select board meeting, but Chance is welcome to sit in on it.
Yeah, because we're trying to read through it and put together what we would be eligible for.
Yeah. I think, I think she, I think she could help you with that.
Yeah.
She is very knowledgeable.
Perfect, because it's a little bit loose, the guidance right now, but.
Well, and again, and it's not fully established yet, but maybe by three weeks from now, it, it might be.
Yeah, so we're working on that, so, because we, we would obviously have some interest in that because of our stuff.
And I know some members of the Planning Commission are sort of interested in it too.
Yeah, because it, it looks like it's really no money for some pet projects, but it is for things you actually spend or things that, extra money, people could have been paid during their responses during the time, whatnot, so.
That's definitely true, I like, yeah, the town of Montpelier is trying to recover money that it didn't get from its traffic meters.
Yeah, we lost, we lost over twenty-five thousand in our two years' worth of fundraising for our rescue things.
Okay.
We didn't send letters out for two years now, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so.
For example.
And I know that, I know that that's eligible, and the thing that you brought up, Chris, about perhaps giving some money to CV Fiber for implementation in Woodbury, that is definitely a possibility, that we could do that if, if we choose to, I asked Bonnie that, and she said yes.
I think it's a good idea, we'll meet with her, we'll put our stuff together and see what we come up with for everybody.
Okay, so.
I think it's fairly worth considering, if we, if we want to have people who can work efficiently.
Yep.
Yes, no, it, and it's part of the, the new town plan that we're working on, that, that's.
And it's eligible.
Top priorities, yeah, and there's money available for that.
I think it should be, you know, I'd argue that it should be prioritized in a way, but I think a conversation that we should definitely have.
Yeah, and we can, you know, this project of maybe trying to fix up the town hall, that's you can, we might be able to stretch that, and Bonnie could advise us on that. So, there are other projects that might sort of indirectly apply there, I think there's special paperwork that you have to do for something that is a little bit of, of a stretch.
We're not under the gun for this right at the moment, are we, anyway, there's some.
No, there's no, no deadline.
But I think it's, it's important that we get all the stuff together that's eligible, and then take a thoughtful look at what, what the high priority things are.
Yeah, that's what towns are being encouraged to do, come up with ideas and, and then see if they're eligible or figure out ways to make, make them eligible. So, okay, good, so I'll, I'll let, I'll see if Bonnie can come, and I'm pretty sure she will be able to come to our meeting. That's it on the agenda.
I'm good.
One quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
Can you text me Chris Davison's telephone number?
Heck, yes.
Okay.
Yep, I'll send it to you just in a moment.
Alright, I'll, I'll get ahold of him and see what, what's going on, we'll set up a time.
I appreciate that, Chuck, thanks.
No problem, glad to do it.
I'll just bring up one other thing, I have the DVR RPC tack meeting tomorrow evening.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll just report back on that when we're together in three weeks.
Alright. So, how are the black flies up in Maine?
Eating me alive on this porch right now.
I figured I was gonna ask you, if you're sitting outside, you're probably dinner.
Yep, I am suffering, I'm a little bloody and covered.
I guess we better adjourn then.
He wants to go in.
I am covered in deep, and that'll be its own thing later on in my life.
Pretty good here in Woodbury too, so.
Yeah, they're pretty bad, I'm not outside, no worries.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Teagan, I just, you know, we, we go off on a lot of tangents during these meetings, as you've just witnessed.
You can just sleep through those.
Don't, don't try to get those. Yeah, and eventually you'll kind of learn when what we're talking about is important, it needs to be in the minutes, and when we're just kind of off somewhere.
Yeah, so.
I'll try to get the draft sent out to you tomorrow to leave some time.
Okay.
Perfect. I think by statute, we have five days to get the draft.
Yeah, and of course, the question is, are they calendar days or business days, but so.
I think we're always good if they're posted by Friday.
Yeah.
Be great.
Calendar days is what the LCT.
Yeah. Because we meet on Monday, if we have them out there by Friday as a draft, that's fine with me.
Yeah. And even just your notes can, that can be considered a draft, if, which may be what happens, because I won't have a whole lot of time to, to go through them.
Yeah, because it's just draft minutes, so.
By Friday, yeah, yeah. Good, so.
Alright.
Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Look at it.
Yeah, he's got no blood left, aye, let's talk about adjournment for the next half hour.